Corrections or additions?
Hearing that, I make motion to approve the agenda for today.
I will second.
Spend a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, question carries. Approval Monday, May, Monday, June thirteenth minutes.
I would like to make a correction, and I've talked before, made correction on the regard to salary at Dolmores and Reed. Different, that it was a hundred thousand, and it's also helped then in June or July for TBLs for the increase on the regular wage increase that everybody else gets. And I keep, went and changed that, right?
Yeah.
But that's done, I would make a motion to approve. Minutes with that correction.
I'll second.
There's been a motion in a second with the change to the minutes, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, question carries. Item number one, approved Landis request for anhydrous installation. Good morning, income set right up here if you'd like.
Well, my name is Chris Nation, from this Landis cooperative, I don't know. For those of you that are not familiar with our business, we're a grain and agronomy company, facilities in west central, central, and north central Iowa. We have a soy processing plant over in Rawlsen, and we grind about three and a half million bushels of soybeans over there annually, so heavily involved in agriculture, so. My purpose for being here this morning is to outline Landis' planned upgrade of our anhydrous facility in Templeton, Iowa. Anhydrous is a highly regulated product by the state, so we need to make the governing entity aware of what our plans are and seek your approval for this installation. Our board of, our board of directors and our management team recently approved a three-year overhaul of our anhydrous business, so we'll be upgrading, upgrading our facilities, concentrating on key locations, I guess is what we're trying to do, modernizing our plants, making them more efficient and safety. Safety, of course, being a critical factor in handling anhydrous, so this is, this is the first phase of a three-year plan to upgrade our facilities. So I provided these maps and outlined the scope of the work that's being done down in Templeton. So on that, on that very first Google map that you have there, on the right side at the top is where our current anhydrous plant sits on the north side of Templeton. And then that line extending out to the left, is what we call our TCM dry fertilizer facility, so that's where the new installation will, will be built. And once that new plant's built out west of town, the existing plant in the, in the town of Templeton will be taken out of service and just completely abandoned, we'll move all that equipment out of there and, and clean that facility up, and then the new one will be out on the west side of town. The second, the second page, I guess, is, this is the standardized layout that Landis is going to incorporate in all of our upgrades, I guess. Templeton will have two thirty thousand gallon storage tanks that'll be moved in from another, other parts of the company. And again, Idols is involved in every step of that, they'll inspect these tanks before we move them. When this site is done, we won't be able to put it into service until the state comes back and inspects their re-ench of it, so. So as we're building this, the state is involved, once it's built, then we can operate it until they've come in and approved everything, everything that we've done there, and this is done by a company that does this routinely. The last picture is just how that installation will lay on that existing plant layout out there at TCM, so. So that's kind of, that's the gist, I guess, of the scope of this project in Templeton. Like I say, the state, the state is involved in every aspect of it, so. Work very closely with them to see that it's done the way it should be done, but.
Any questions? So you will let the existing tanks that are in, in town, you're gonna dispose and they're not to be used out there then?
Uh, one of those tanks is already out of service, they have to have what, the data plate on it, it has to be a legible data plate, and we have to have a build sheet for it. If we don't have either of those, it's cost prohibitive to bring those back into service. So we've got a lot of people that are interested in buying those, farmers will buy those for, they'll be tanks at their hog facilities or grain graying, so there's a pretty hot market, but we won't try to use those.
How big are those tanks in town?
I don't think they're even thirties.
I didn't think they were, yeah.
So they don't, again, we're trying to go through size, so, but I know one of them's not fit to use as it is, so it's out of service now. So it'll be nice to get it out of town.
So is this the first step you've done?
Yeah. Idols has to come in and approve the site, just take a general look at it, approve it, they have done that at Templeton. But yeah, this is the first step in their process to.
You have to get a building from downstairs, and if I remember right, I think on this we have to have a public hearing.
I think the, the notice is what Idols requires, it's just notice of public, notice to the public of our intentions.
Idol, Iowa.
Iowa Department of Ag and Land.
We did that one up at Arcadia, I saw we did a public hearing on that.
If you had a little track, I mean, from the community, I assume they'd probably be more excited that it's going out town, it's gonna lower the truckload within.
We haven't gone to the city council because it's, it's a county, it's a county jurisdiction, so. Gene, I don't know if you suggest we go to the city council and, and make them aware of our plans, but.
I, I don't think it would hurt to let them know that.
Anytime you get anhydrous out of a community like that, it's a.
And, and you move anhydrous, it can be controversial.
I don't see why you would have, you know, push back just because you are going to.
I could see one.
Well, so the tax base will leave town and it will be.
In a world.
World, and that's not gonna be an issue in the city, I don't think.
Yeah, okay.
I'd, I'd like to check into that, because I think, I thought we had a public hearing, I know there's a notice up to me, so.
Zach, you got any problems with the traffic flow issues, driveways? Any issues been created out there that's more of traffic than we have before?
I don't think so, I'd say this is pretty good out there.
Well, you're gonna probably use the same driveway that's there now.
It's big enough to accommodate semi.
Semi, yeah, because that, that dry fertilizer plant out there, it's a twenty-one thousand ton plant, there's heavy semi-traffic.
And then that piece that's.
Yellow.
That's a cornfield. Okay, so. No, I just, I.
It's a stadium up there.
Just wanna know if we're gonna come back later on a different driveway or additional driveway to make a loop.
I don't, I don't foresee.
And I, I can't remember if that's a little hill, a hill there, isn't that just a little?
Up into the property, there's a hill there.
On the road is pretty flat.
It's pretty flat.
I think so.
I can't recall exactly.
So I could certainly address the public.
Well, I, I would say we'd need to probably get a permit from building to maintain the charity downstairs. And I think we need to, a follow-up of, we have to have a public hearing or just a notice.
So who would answer that question for us?
Probably Carrie, or we'd have to maybe, she can check with John, well.
We, I can send him an email, just say this is what was going on today, just wanna double check.
Yeah, maybe.
And I can forward you some information from Idols on their, on their requirements of notice, public notice.
I just wanna make sure we get it done right.
Yeah, no, I don't wanna come back after we start.
We did one up north of Arcadia that. I think we have, I thought we had a public, I know some sort of notice.
No, and we'd be glad to address that, like, see, we don't wanna get this, get this project started and then.
I think this, this is a good move.
Yeah, I think.
Cause I've, I've been there already when I, I remember the time you had an issue, that was a very scary day.
Hideous leak? From a railcar or from a cellar, or from the plant?
Yeah, we've, this design that we're adding, all of the, a lot of times will bury the, bury the piping underground, which leads to some issues, but we're gonna, but all the, all the plumbing will be above ground in troughs, so there won't be any unseen piping that we can inspect routinely. They've got electronic shut-off devices now, so employees will carry these on their back, and if there's any kind of release at all, they'll be able to hit that button. Today, they have to run back toward the plant to shut the plant down, which is counterintuitive, but, so, part of this upgrade will include these electronic shut-off valves, and you'll be able to shut it off from a distance and hopefully a lot faster than what we do today, so. So we're trying to, we're trying to make it as, as safe and as effective as possible, so, so yeah, we'll address that, I guess, whoever can help us answer that, I'll forward you some information.
Do you have to go look through the planning and zoning board, or through this, or just make sure the ordinances are there?
Well, that's, that's the other thing, I think, I'm assuming where the plan is, is, is commercial now or, or industrial? And that's the other thing, what, what that area to the west is on. Cause according to this, are you sending, is this actually the location here, or is that plenty far west that location?
Yeah, it's.
It's actually more right here, right?
Yeah, it's more right here.
You can see it.
Yeah, I just didn't, I didn't land my, I didn't land my distance.
So and then, then it might, so it's on the existing property now, now?
Yeah.
Okay, so then I don't think.
That's where it lay relative to the rest.
So it's on the existing property, I don't think that's.
I would assume that that ordinance covered the property and not that driveway. They didn't use the driveway as the borderline, I, I assume they didn't, but.
But we need to check into.
Right.
That we can get property, get the property outlined and.
I wanna ask Carrie about that too, if the zoning is correct on it.
So can we check with John and Carrie and then maybe put this on the agenda for next week or?
Well, unless we have to do a hearing with, or notice. We may not be able to do it right away, I'm, I'm sure you have to have so many days without notice.
If, if we are required to hold a public hearing, it will be next Monday, the following Monday, if we can earliest.
And I would sooner have one than not have one myself. There, based here of any issues right off the bat.
Okay. You'll let me know.
All right, Chris. Anytime you deal in hydros and gets controversial, I should address that.
Yeah, we don't wanna start construction and, and then have to pull the plug on the project, so, no, we'll take the time to address whatever we need to, and then when the board's satisfied, we'll ask for approval and start digging dirt, so, all right.
Thanks, Chris.
Next item on the agenda is consider approval for Carrollton Park donation. Mr. Christensen, morning, Jason.
So, at our last conservation board meeting, some members of the Carrollton Community Heritage Club approached the conservation board about donating the old Carrollton Park area, if you're familiar with that at all, it's, if you're on the Willie Denham Blacktop, you turn by one of the feedlots and head east, I think you guys are all where the old Carrollton School was and store and everything down there. So there's two small pieces, the smaller one was, I believe, where the store was, and that's where they built the park, and then the one further down the road, the little larger piece, it's these two red boxes there that are kinda hash marked, was where the old school was, and they've done some work there too. So it'd be those two pieces, total acreage, it's right at two acres for both of them. And they've all been, both areas have been developed, on the second page is what they've done at the school site, the top pictures are the old school building, which has been removed, so we don't have to worry about any old dilapidated buildings, and they've gone and made a little interpretive park, the bell tower, some benches, different interpretive signage, different things they've done on that site. And then the third page is the old Carrollton's, the old Carrollton store, again, that building is down, and they've taken that little piece and also done kind of an interpretive part, a little bit on the history of Carrollton and that kinda stuff. Their group, which is a nonprofit group, it's key to these pieces, they're all, all the members of their group are getting older, they don't really have the drive to take care of it anymore, so they, what they would like to do is to donate it to the county, to the conservation board to manage. At our conservation board meeting, my board did approve managing that property, but obviously since it will be county property, I'm here to ask for the board's approval to move forward with accepting this donation.
So you enlisted the conservation board?
And there's, like I said, it's all been developed, so there's nothing other than maintenance of the park, which would be for our purposes, mowing, weed eating, that kinda stuff, and we brought our crew down to Coon Rapids to do mowing and weed eating anyway, so it's really not out of the way for us. It's just gonna take a little extra time, but all the, all the work's been done to the park, it's been developed, so there's no really, there won't be any development costs for the park, except for, you know, down the road kinda.
Most everything we see in that picture is up here.
Yeah.
And that is just really not, much, just a bunch of trees there, and there's no maintenance in there, it's just.
Yeah.
Let it go, yeah.
So there are some trees and stuff around the perimeters and stuff that, you know, might need some attention from time to time, but other than, you know, annual mowing, that kinda stuff, the rest of the park's been developed, it worked out over the last several years.
Mentioned there's any value of that old piece, I mean, as respect to the history of the, I've never heard of that history.
Well, old, old Carrollton was the first town in Carroll County and.
But I've never heard anything tied to that specifically.
I think that's where the, I believe that's where the store used to be.
Okay.
So they had a store and a school, and then I assume at one point there was probably.
There's a whole town and stuff there, yeah.
Original court.
Original courthouse was there.
I remember that.
Yeah.
So they approached the conservation board as wanting the conservation board to basically take over the care and maintenance of the park, because they don't.
So would there be liability, would this be a John Warden approval needed thing first?
I mean, it was.
Somebody.
I've talked to John, and he said that he would handle the paperwork as far as getting the deed, he would just basically roll over to, you know, a county park.
Which where we have insurance and.
Which will fall under all.
That might, would have to come probably up, there would be a tax that's being paid on that now.
Not, not.
From what I looked back, it looked like, no.
It was anything not proper. Okay, I just didn't know if that had to be cleaned up or if John won't, won't catch that too.
Well, as long as, I mean, my concern is that there's no buildings yet, we had a, you know, especially.
Right, everything that was dilapidated, it's been tore down, the wells of all the cash, you know, everything, so we shouldn't have any issues other than just general maintenance of the park.
Probably just let Terry at the N Iowa know.
Yeah.
When that school was tore down, was that all, all offsite, you know?
That I don't know. I don't.
So we have our.
I remember being there when I first came up here, but I.
Oh, I remember.
What year did it disappear, I?
I don't remember if it would be a whole duck.
I don't either.
You have a good idea, yeah.
I don't think it would be a whole duck.
Family ties down there.
So, cause that I can't answer.
If I had to guess, I got all the way, but I don't know for sure.
Think you're probably right.
When they took the school down?
Yeah.
No, it was.
That was fairly recent.
I'd say in the last ten years.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't in good shape, but they were, they tried to, they tried to, they wanted to fix it.
They wanted to. Started a cave.
I think they found it to the down just because it was.
So where was the original courthouse at in comparison to?
I think in the. I think it was Senator's, it was actually kinda like a block here. I think it was more in the middle, I think, I think kinda near their intersection, I think.
Well, I was just, I thought it'd be kinda neat if there was a marker for that too somewhere, but.
If it's somewhere in those two.
If it's somewhere we can access, we could definitely look at that some simple way.
I don't see how much of this, so, it's a good thing they're on board.
Well, at least it, it allows the, they've done a lot of work down there.
Well.
It allows it to at least be maintained and kept well.
They worked hard yet.
They, they have, they've spent a lot of time through it, so I think they, they just want somebody that's gonna.
It's just gonna be that we're gonna have more maintenance, that's all.
Yeah.
Or, or wherever.
Yep.
But it does, like you said, it does keep the history of it, of it there.
Oh, yeah, and, and talking with John on it, yeah, he's.
So who owns that group to north there then?
I'm more narrow on this part of that.
He's down there.
He's, he's on his east to the west there.
He wants north and west of.
Yeah, north and west.
Yeah, both, yeah, his building is like right.
Yeah, this is the property I think he's got.
Yeah, yeah. So we need a motion to accept the donation. Carrollton Community, is there a official name?
I'll make a motion to approve the donation from the Carrollton Park, the two properties, the old schoolhouse and the old gymnasio, on two hundred eighty.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Spend a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, question carries. It's Jason.
All right, thank you all very much.
All right, next item on the agenda, secondary roads, we have some utility permits and construction update, morning, Zach.
Morning.
Morning.
Got a few utility permits today. First three are for Racine Valley Electric, they're all pretty, pretty simple ones, we can probably do all three of those together unless you wanna do them separate. First one is Weavlin Township, section twenty-one, getting born power underneath the road for an existing acreage beyond Hundred and Fortyth Street, just east M sixty-eight. Same as they always do, will be minimum four foot below existing ground. I don't see any, any issues with it. Uh, next one is Richland Township, section six. This is on Two Hundred and Twentieth Street, west of Timber, this is for a new house or remodeled house is what it will be.
One that got moved?
Yes, it is, it is.
Yeah, that's what I kinda figured.
Yeah.
So they're moving the house, they're born aligned to get to the house, the house does not.
The house is sitting there right now, it's not on the foundation yet, but it's sitting there on a trailer basically to be set, so. It's out, it's out there ways, it's interesting, but same thing there. Minimum four feet below the road, so just born underneath, getting power to that new, that new site, so don't see any issues with that. Last one is Maple River Township, section ten eleven, and this one is for a new house that's going on Kitty Hawk, the south of Hundred and Seventieth Street.
I'll make, I don't see a problem with any of those three, I'll make a motion that we approve all the Racine Valley utilities, that's, that's.
Spend a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, question carries.
Thank you. Uh, next one is for Brian Wendell. He is putting a eight-inch PVC line with a twelve-inch casing underneath Olympic Avenue, right by his feedlot there, basically to get to a new irrigation system he put on the west side of the road, basically collecting runoff from the feedlot and doing very similar what he's doing on the east side of the road, on the west side of the road.
So he's been removing the, the manure from the east to the west?
And it's, I don't know if it's really manure, it's, it's basically the water that runs off the feedlot, he contains in a pit, and then he'll pump that through the system liquid. Through, through.
Essentially a forced main.
It's essentially a forced main, yeah.
DNR permit.
I don't know if he has to with it being runoff water, because it's, it's runoff, it's not, it's not manure.
It was, well. There recently an issue with it leaking into its streams, runoff, is that to fix this, or is that some?
That's completely separate, completely separate, yeah.
So there's, let me ask this one. If we have the leak underneath the road, then they grow to fix it.
Well, that's why there's a casing pipe, so the pipe, there's an aided pipe with this material's going through, if that pipe leaks, it's gonna run through the casing pipe, and again, it's gonna be out, outside of our right of way, because the casing that goes out to our, beyond our right of way. So if that pipe would leak, you replace it with a new ca, new pipe inside, that's why you case them. But if there was a leak, if there was a problem, just like in any other, I'll call it private bore, it's the responsibility of that owner of that facility to fix it, correct?
But to say it's, that it's, it's just runoff water, I would say that's not necessarily.
It's, it's.
There's, there's some stuff moves with that.
There is, absolutely, there's, it's, it's feedlot runoff, so there's a difference.
Yeah, but if it's cased outside of the right of way, that makes a big difference, and I, I would question too that. You might not have to have a DNR permit for that.
He, if he, if he does, he already has one for the east side, so he'd have to add to that when he does his renewal, or whenever he does what he does, because he's been doing it on the east side of the road for a while.
He's got irrigation system runoff, they pump it off and spread it on the crops.
He's got a couple different setups, he's got one.
But not on that side.
Not on this side of the road, no.
Correct.
So.
The irrigation thing is said, our last time went through.
There's not much difference between a manure management, where you haul manure from a site to another site, that you have to ever commit for, whether it be your land or not. So why not a permit?
I'm sure, I'm sure he's gotta get.
He'll have to get, he'll have to amend his existing plan to do this, is what I think he'll have to do, I don't think it's anything separate, I think it's, my guess is it's amending what he already has to include this in his operation.
I'm sure that a plan is amended constantly, because there's trucks that run down south every day with solids.
I know.
And that's where they're coming from, and so they're finding new farms to put it on.
And I can, I can call and ask them there.
Well, I just, one, I don't want to deal with the DNR.
Yep.
I want them to be clear and happy about this, I don't, I don't want the county to get caught brushwizing this in any way.
Yep. I, I think the, I think the casing pipe is the, is the big thing, the fact that that, I mean.
That, that does change the, the game a little bit to me. So that does make it a lot more secure. I will agree to that.
I would say we could approve it subterranean, make sure there's all the DNR committed.
We don't oversee the DNR anyway, so even if he needs a permit through the DNR, that would be his own support.
Yeah.
I don't know the DNR even, I mean, there's nothing we're doing that is, the DNR can come back on us, we're. I don't know the DNR even, I mean, there's nothing we're doing that is, the DNR can come back on us, we're. The the county is the one that's going to set the rules on how utilities go underneath the right away.
Right.
And and since, and we're, I think, doing it the right way with having it having cased. I I don't, I don't think they could even come back, even if they they wanted to.
Okay.
I don't think they'd have any jurisdiction to say that you're doing something wrong, because.
Other communities that do forced mains on the rivers and then the other roads.
Correct. In a.
Well.
Those all have to be.
I I actually. Actually, we uh. We've got one in Maple River that's on, Maple River sewer system goes under tracks, it's a case main.
Right.
Bottom line is if, if he didn't comply with the rules of what he needs to do for DNR purposes, it's it's gonna be on him, it's not gonna be on us.
But you're gonna have a conversation?
I will.
Okay.
I will.
Um, so with that, we're in order for a motion to approve that under the boring casing.
What's happening?
I'll make that motion.
So second.
There's been a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, construction update.
Really short on that, um, last Friday late, they did get um everything completed, all their equipment hauled off. Uh, so the N three bridge is open, um, I know they pulled the signs off, I think the contractor. The subcontractor that have was, who signs they were, we're supposed to pick those up this weekend, so it should be ready to go. No, this is the one, this is on two hundred and eighty, yep.
Without any hitches, no, they had hitches.
It it really went pretty well, it really did.
Take them along, take them along and get it fixed.
What? No.
The water lane?
Uh, they're out there pretty quick. It was shallow.
Yeah, I heard it was shallow.
Left part construction.
I heard about it.
Anyway.
To the corner to the west, I haven't been out to, I haven't had a chance, I just heard this over the weekend. They said on the north side that.
Is that great?
There was a hole in the place.
Off the look, I don't know. Which way the intersection, west or east?
The west on the north side on the intersection.
Okay. I'll take a look.
If you had any concerns or trouble about that corner down there.
Keep trying.
I talked once and uh haven't heard anymore and what's.
Two different flags.
I I know they had a, just trying to happen to see somewhere was in the paper or whatever, that they had a little discussion at one of the council meetings, but I didn't. Really know much more than how how that ended up, how it went, but um, so I think they're talking, I don't know what the. The long and short of it is.
All that intercepts a purge attempt. There's an issue. Well, I had a monitor. Out in the middle of the road, got this.
Um, no.
Should we get around her sometime this week? I'm I'm gonna be probably. I'll try to work with you.
I can try to get down there.
Well, let me know, I I'm kind of tied up probably once or two.
Okay. All right, I'll let you know.
So when are they screening?
Dust control, uh tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Tomorrow, just found out late last week that they were coming and we got it officially set for tomorrow through this morning. Tomorrow, we'll get most of it done and probably finish up on Wednesday, more likely. Thank you, we forgot about that.
I would have forgotten about it, my husband reminded me this morning.
Go ahead, that's fine.
He put flags up.
Sure.
So like. Jess went out and put flags from where he wants him to start and stop, and he brought it up last night, he's like, they gotta be coming soon.
I gotta do a chair thing with my brother on the sound, with him all over my brother.
Mm-hmm.
I'll I'll see.
Okay.
All right, thanks Zach.
Yep, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to approve fireworks display permit for Central Church on June twenty-fifth. Let me sign this.
I'm making.
I haven't.
But.
I'm just gonna say it, I don't know if you noticed, but it said chairman, it's like the chair person. How do we need to update our form? It's okay.
I made a motion, we approved the fireworks permit.
I'll second.
And a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Probably shouldn't always say.
Close. Motion carries. Honestly.
That covers all bases.
True. Next item is to approve inter inter fund transfer. From local option sales tax to jail project capital fund.
Okay, so this is kind of just to clean up. That project, since we are expenses for the most part are done, our fund fifteen oh seven, which is the capital fund, is short. Sixty-seven, fifty-four, fifty-five, uh, we're not technically moving any money into the bank, but um in order to get our general ledger to tie. We need to put some more money in there, so basically, um, we're short sixty-seven, fifty-four, fifty-five.
I should clean her up then.
That will zero out that fund, um, I think Lisa said there's eighteen cents left in the bank, so what we'll probably do is just close the account and transfer the eighteen cents to our general fund. Or local action will receive it, I guess, I was hoping there'd be a little more in there.
I mean.
Actually, I was gonna ask you, did we cut that check for Shite Battery?
We had a bill, we paid one or two bills last bill day to Shite. It looked to me like that was the last one. But unless there's another one coming, but when you look at their bill, it shows like what the contract is and what we've paid. It looked to me like that was the last one.
That could be it, that could have been that last roughly ten thousand dollars we owed them, which Courtney will be getting a jump drive of the as-is builds. Probably today or not today, tomorrow.
Right, yeah, we're just will have. Have several copies of that, so we can lose, we got one to drive back. See, if we get one of those jump drives, you got to take Billy's friend, most friends off, okay?
Sarah Kim.
Well, Sarah, good.
Well, yeah, she's got the big flat.
Okay.
Flat, plot, plot, is that what you call it?
I think it'd be nice to.
I think you're right.
Be nice to have a hard copy of that.
You can be an engineer, you know the terms, plot.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, then we can get that done.
It's that easy?
It's that easy.
I thought you had to go to school.
And you dad, you could subtract, and you know plot for it, so there you go.
I will make a motion that we approve that resolution for the transfer. Of sixty-seven hundred, whatever dollars it was.
Sixty-seven, fifty-four, fifty-five.
I'll second it.
All right, there's been a motion and a second roll call.
Austin?
Yes.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Miners.
Yes.
Motion carries, I'll pass this around.
We can make these dollars, I do this. Um, no, okay. All right, next item on the agenda, I'm gonna start with the manure managements, we've got quite a few. Connor North, section twenty Jasper Township, no changes. Connor South, section twenty Jasper Township, updated soil samples and P indexes. Brandon Kirkoff, section seven Eden Township, no changes. Birchport, section thirty-one Arcadia Township, no changes. JMK Finisher, section thirteen Ewell Township, no changes. Oliver Connor, Oliver One, section fourteen Grant Township, updated soil samples and P indexes. Nick Haven, section fourteen Glidden Township, no changes. Brady Bell, section fifteen Sheridan Township, no changes. PI two seven one Finisher, section thirty Newton Township, no changes. Smith Livestock, section one Washington Township, no changes. Ranch Creek, section twenty-five Glidden Township, no changes. Timberlane, section six Glidden Township, no changes. Randy Kohurst, farm site one, section thirty-two Wheatland Township, crop rotation for optimum yields. Updated R U S O E S two S and P indexes. Randy Kohurst, farm site two, section thirty-two Wheatland Township, crop change. Change crop rotation for optimum yields, updated R U S L E two S and P indexes. Shears Finisher, section five Arcadia Township, changed crop rotation for optimum yields, updated R U S L E. Two S and P indexes. Woodford Creek Farms, number seven four nine, section eleven Pleasant Valley Township, changed crop rotation or optimum yields. Woodford Creek Farms, number ninety-four dash seven four zero, section four Union Township, changed crop rotations or optimum yields. Ice Shite Farm, section six Roselle Township, crop rotation and/or optimum yields. Joe Tomka, section thirty-five Arcadia Township, no changes. Stangle Site, section seventeen Washington Township, changed crop rotation or optimum yields. And Woodford Creek Farms, number seven five three, section twenty-four Wheatland Township, original plan. And finally Brad Renzi, section twenty-two, twenty-two Iowa County Crawford County, changed proper crop rotation or optimum yields, updated R U S L E two S and P indexes. We can go on to committee reports if somebody wants to start.
Go ahead.
Last week, on Tuesday, I had the Land Solid Waste Commission, um, June. Monthly meeting, and then Monday or Tuesday afternoon, Mary Witry and I met with city officials at city hall to talk about. Bleach eight and the BODs. The town is currently sending them, we're still waiting on a report from them. Thursday decaterization meeting. And this week, Friday, I have judicial meeting in Webster City and. Perhaps Ukrainian refugee meeting on Wednesday.
Okay, go ahead. All right, um, last week. Uh, I had a yes center board meeting that I wasn't aware of, went last Monday, but we did have one last Friday. Uh, we went through the financials, things are getting, council fee were up to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand yet, they're all pretty current. Uh, we do have one issue with the Woodbury bill, but they're working that through. We did have a speaker from the the teacher that teaches at the classroom there. And he said most of those kids are a couple of grades below their their peers. Uh, there's a hundred and seventy-one students went through there per year this last year. And parents like Woodbury has a hundred and twelve, so we've been very busy. Uh, forty-three of those kids have are on IDPs. They average about fourteen kids through the year per day. Uh, they got grades from six through twelve up to there. He said also that all those kids don't even know what grade level they're in when they come in. Kind of scary. Um, we did get the, had an audit from BIA, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, that came out perfect, so we're getting the contract renewed from them. Uh, they are doing an artistic program with the kids up there, and it also helps with doing evaluations of those kids. Uh, evidently, we have one up there right now, it's pretty high maintenance, so that might be there for a while. The average uh for the month was ten point six two, uh, Friday they had twelve there. Uh, one of the things we talked about was they they're looking at, the cars always becomes an issue. Sioux Rivers Mental Health Region up there had extra money from their ARP and being to do a lot of transfers for them, they were. Going to give us ninety thousand dollars to buy cars with, and so she had three cars lined up, a Honda and two Hondas. Uh, because that to get them off lock, but. Well, we're not able to do it because Shane Walter, uh, the director up there. He evidently didn't get a budget amendment done on it, so they have to wait now for July, after July first, so. It looks like we might be able to get some cars for, with some good support help. Um, so that's, that's good. Uh, this week, I have at this point, uh. CADC tomorrow at noon, and I think that's about it. Voice of you change.
Bye.
All right, I'll catch you up from region twelve, which was actually back in June ninth. The Development Corporation made a loan to Lack Snack in Sack City. Uh, that was the second loan that they have done with that company, they had paid one off and now starting another one. And a lot of people have ever, if you've ever heard of Molly and you, that's part of that corporation. Been very successful and uh doing pretty well, just needs some inventory update money for a new venture. Um. Other than that, um, staffing, uh, regional planner position remains open, we've advertised and advertised twice, and we. Have not received any applicants, so they're gonna reevaluate that, uh, whether it's pay, uh, work. There's, there's, there's not sure exactly what's, why that's not uh at least getting applicants, so. Uh, that will be sometime this month, hopefully it's solved. That's it for region twelve, uh, upcoming this week, I have CADC tomorrow. Uh, Wednesday, we'll, I'll try to attend the Saint John's Ukrainian update, and then also on Wednesday, I need to be in Full Steam for. Rolling Hills Mental Health.
All right, I will go last. Uh, last week, I had Wes Goover and Dennison. Things are running well there, they've had some pretty good months as far as finances, again, just like everywhere else, they're struggling with um. Finding staff keeping, well, they keep most of their staff and. Let's see. They currently have a hundred and twenty-six active employees and a hundred and twenty-three wrapped up last month, if you guys asked me that question. Um, yeah, no, they're they're doing good, they finished the union negotiations, so hopefully we'll know that percentage. At the next meeting. Then that was it for last week, this week I have daycare meeting tonight, and I do have a CADC round table on daycare issues within Kero County. And that is it. I was gonna potentially go to. The Ukrainian refugee meeting Wednesday at ten, but that's gonna be up near, so I'm not a hundred percent sure if I'll be there or not, if I can make it work, I'll be there.
I'm used to covering for it.
Yeah, I appreciate it. All right, I also tried to reach out to Kelly Foley in reference to the round table. For surfacing, we're surfacing, fixing the roads, maybe wherever, I'm not from, I get to hear anything back. So I kind of figured you'd be there that night, we do that. In order for a motion to adjourn.
So I'm.
Oh, yeah, hey Dalton or Ben, is there any comments online?
No.
No, there's none.
All right, thank you.
We're gonna give an input for our next meeting.
We um, we'll have a bill day and fireworks permit.
With that knowledge, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
But a motion in a second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned, please downline. Please.
Do da.